Good evening. At this time, we'll call the regular monthly meeting of Hamlet City Council to order. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're glad to see you. It's a cold night. We have with us tonight scouts from Troop Five Twenty Seven who are completing their citizenship in the community award, and we're glad to have them with us tonight. We're also glad to have with us tonight Mr. Oscar Sellers, who next month will be joining us up here for, as a councilman, and congratulations to you. At this time, we call Reverend Bill Monroe to give our invocation. Thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome, sir. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight expressing our love for you. We thank you, God, for the many blessings of life that you give to us each and every day that we did not rightly deserve. We thank you, God, for this council, these men and women who serve us in our community. We thank you for our small town of Hamlet, God, and the things that you have given to us. Lord, we come to you tonight also thanking you for Jesus, as he came into the world, he took our sins, that we might have eternal life. These are prayers that we lift up according to his name. And we just again pray for this meeting tonight and those who are present, that it would be a meeting that would benefit not only our town, but all the people who are represented here tonight. So we just thank you again, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again. Council, you have before you at this time the agenda for tonight's meeting. I have had a request to add in item eight A, which will be a discussion of dog issues in the city, and also to delete item number six, which will be put off till next month. What are your wishes, council?
Make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other changes? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise.
I'm sorry, but who made the motion and the second?
Motion, second. Next item on the agenda, item number four is approval of irregular minute meetings before, for October the eighth. You have those before you at this time, council. What are your wishes? Have a motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion, additions, deletions, or changes? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. This time, we move to item number five, which is comments from attendees. We have several people who have asked to be on the, to speak tonight, and I'll call you one at a time. First name I have on here is Ms. Kay Cavendish, that wished to make comments.
First of all, I'm not a citizen of Hamlet, but I am of the county, and I'm in Hamlet a lot. And all of us have noticed all the improvements at the lake, and I think it's fantastic and everything. I mean, it goes without saying, I've seen so much about it, but it is great. But another thing that I've noticed that I think is important is the way the people in the maintenance department have cleaned up Highway Thirty-Eight's, edged it and got the dirt out of the road, across Raleigh Street, and up Hamlet Avenue. Hamlet Avenue gained about a foot and a half road on either side when they cleaned it up, and it looks good. And I noticed it, and I think it makes a wonderful impression, and people riding through town on those major roads, Thirty-Eight, Seventy-four, I think they'll come away thinking that we have a nice, neat little town here, and we care about our town. I mean, it's a, I think it's a very positive thing, that's not a huge thing, but it, it makes a good impression on people coming into Hamlet. And I just wanted to thank the people that do it, and make sure that y'all realize how important it is to make a good impression. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. We, we're appreciative of the fact that it is getting noticed, because as a manager and the city, workers have really worked hard on a lot of areas, and we're still working too, and I appreciate that myself. Thank you. Next, Mr. Dr. Dale McKinnis, President of Richmond Community College. We're glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've got a special announcement I'd like to make, and if I can, I'd like Dr. How Schuler,
Certainly.
Our Associate Vice President for Development at the college to join me, and I'm going to ask him to read an announcement that I think will be of special interest to y'all, and then we want to make a little presentation.
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well. I wanted to announce on behalf of the college, and behalf of some friends of this certain person and family, the Eddie R. Martin Law Enforcement Leadership Scholarship. And I want to read you a little bit how the scholarship, how it states, and I think you'll understand. The Richmond Community College Foundation hereby establishes the Eddie R. Martin Law Enforcement Leadership Scholarship. The scholarship is established to honor a lifelong public servant and pillar of law enforcement in Richmond County, former Rockingham Chief of Police Eddie R. Martin. Chief Martin was born in Hamlet on August twenty-second, nineteen forty-four. Began his career in public service in nineteen sixty-two by joining the U.S. Marine Corps. From nineteen sixty-two to nineteen sixty-six, Chief Martin served his country honorably through several tours of duty, including Vietnam. Upon his return home, Chief Martin worked with the Charlotte Police Department from nineteen sixty-eight to nineteen seventy-one, and then with the Railroad Property Protection Department as a special agent from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-five. It was in nineteen seventy-five, however, that Chief Martin would return to Richmond County to embark on the journey that would carve out the legacy of his lifetime, chief of police for the Rockingham Police Department, a position he would hold until his retirement in two thousand and two. Upon his retirement, Chief Martin continued to exemplify the heart of a public servant by serving as a magistrate from two thousand and two to two thousand and seven, and then again in two thousand, twenty thirteen, upon his election as a Hamlet City Councilman, a position he continues to hold. Chief Martin has mentored, guided, and forever touched countless lives throughout his five decades of public service, and has created a lasting legacy throughout the law enforcement field in Richmond County. It is with this same, with that same spirit of passion, dedication, and patriotism that this scholarship is founded in order to assist future leaders in law enforcement to follow in the unparalleled examples set by Eddie R. Martin. Let's give him a hand.
Chief, we had some of your friends that came to us and decided it was time. We've been soliciting scholarships, and they said, can we do one in honor of Chief and Councilman Martin? And we said absolutely, and Dr. Schuler's been working on this for several months, and we talked to Ms. Blanton, and he said it'd be okay to take a few minutes, and we thought this would be appropriate, to come in here. And thank you for your service, and this will be an opportunity for your legacy to live on, as we train others just like you.
Well, I certainly appreciate it, Dr. McKinnis and Dr. Schuler. I mean, caught me by surprise, that's for sure. I don't know how something like this could have been.
It worked then.
Yeah, it worked. It worked. I had, I had no idea, absolutely no idea. But I thank you very much. It's been a long journey.
Well, we appreciate it, and we're going to, just like we always do every fall this week, we'll have our foundation scholarship banquet, and we'll be inviting you next year to come and meet the first recipient.
Well, that's great. I appreciate that.
And you'll be connected with them, and you'll be able to see how your name's going to live on. Mr. Mayor, I think you've been indulging us.
Oh, thank you.
And letting us take time from the council, but we appreciate all y'all do, and the college is proud to be in Hamlet.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Let's get a picture with Chief Martin. All right. Ready, ready. One, two, three. Looks good. Gavin, I want to hop in there. Will you come on and take it for me?
Here we go. Three, two, one.
That's one.
And then we get one more with everybody looking right here. Three, two, one.
Okay, moving along, the next person I have on is Mr. Chris Carpenter from the President of the Seaboard Festival Day. Please come up, Chris. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. Yeah, it's hard to follow up. You have to let me go second instead of third. But I wanted to come tonight, and I wanted to just say thanks to the city. Wanted to thanks, thank Jonathan, the police chief, maintenance department, doc, fire department, you know, all the employees who helped with the Seaboard Festival. I know we do pay for those hours, but, but you know, you guys still do not have to accommodate us with that help. So I wanted to make sure I came tonight and thank everyone with the city for that. And thank you to the council and the ones who came out and helped. We really do appreciate it.
It's really a feather in the cap of Hamlet to have the Seaboard Festival, and the fact that you all took it over and have done such a good job with it the last couple of years. Thank you again. There's not enough thanks for you. And the volunteers are what make Hamlet work.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. This has nothing to do with any opinion of the Seaboard Festival. This is solely my opinion. But stepping into this last year, you know, I'd never been a part of the Seaboard Festival other than going pretty much my whole life. So it was really new. There wasn't a lot of information to work with. And Jonathan was so helpful to me as treasurer last year, and again, this year as president. So it was a pleasure to work with him. I don't always agree with everything he says, but I'm not supposed to. So, but I do want to say, you know, in my opinion, as a citizen, you know, he's, to me, been the most stable thing that I've seen in that position since Marcel was here. And I felt really strongly about Marcel, you know. I think she's done such a good job for us that City of Raleigh took her away from us and made her second in charge of the City of Raleigh. So those are big shoes to fill, and I think he's done a good job, and I want to thank you for helping me the last two years, because we kind of stepped into this kind of lost, you know. So, so I do thank you again for that, and I mean, I commend you for seeing that we needed to be, find something stable for the next three years in the future, you know, so that, I have hope that, you know, we're on the right track. So, and lastly, thanks for adding, I think it was eight A, because as a runner, I run from dogs every day.
We're going to have a little discussion.
I can point out where they are. I'm fixing to go run now, but I do appreciate y'all taking up that issue. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anything we can do, just keep in touch, and you know, we'll work hard to.
I'll be coming to you, because we have a list of things we need a little bit of help with next year, so, thank you.
Great thing for Hamlet. Thank you. I also have on here Ms. Katrina Chance from the Executive Director of Richmond County Partnership for Children. Are you here tonight, ma'am? Okay. Come on up. Thank you for coming tonight. There you go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman and City Manager. Thanks for allowing me to come and have a little time on your, on your agenda. As you said, I'm Katrina Chance, the Executive Director for the Richmond County Partnership for Children. And the Richmond County Partnership for Children, we are a county's resource for program and services designed for children birth to age five here in Richmond County. A lot of you may know about Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It's head shaking, yes. And we also provide professional development NC pre-K subsidy here in Richmond County. And currently, we have a, an awareness campaign going on in reference to adverse childhood experiences, also known as ACES. And our state is actually having a resilience week, and that is going on next week. And on UNC TV on Tuesday, bless you, November the nineteenth, there will be a viewing of a video that everyone is encouraged to, to watch in reference to adverse childhood experiences. And, and I would like to just encourage everyone, if you happen to see a, what we're calling a toilet, an outdoor house, a water closet, some people may call it, on wheels, stop and ask and see if someone can tell you what that means. It's actually someone smiling, they know what an outdoor water closet is, or an outhouse. It's actually bringing awareness to adverse childhood experiences. So, does anyone have any questions? And that is part, that's part of a, part of our awareness campaign for, for ACES.
Very good.
You can actually go to our website and actually see more of that from Smart Start.
Very good.
Ms. Chance is new here to Richmond County. I met her at the Seaboard Festival, and she asked for some time to introduce herself and talk a little bit about what she's doing here in the county, so we're certainly glad to have you here tonight and certainly appreciate.
Yes, and you're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else tonight that has any comments for council? Okay, if not, we will move along to new business. Item number six, recognition of, well, they're not, we postponed that. They'll be here in December. And they were the ones that worked on project down at the city lake, so we'll get them next month, hopefully. Next item, item number seven, the staff's requesting the council to issue an ordinance to demolish property located at two fifteen Pine Street. Richmond County tax card lists the owner as Warren R. Simmons. Notices of violations and statements of fines were mailed by certified and regular mail to the address of the property card. Certified mail was returned unclaimed, however, the regular mail was not. The property is burned, leaving two damaged chimneys and other debris that constitutes a hazard. The property owner has not made contact with the city, and the staff wishes to move forward with the removal of this structure following requirements set forth in general statutes, and has asked council to issue the ordinance to demolish. Council, what are your wishes?
Make a motion, we move forward to demolish the property.
Okay. Have a second. Is any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. We've got a number of these properties in Hamlet that I wish we had the money to take care of cleaning them up and demolishing them, but we can only do with what we've got, and so we're, we're making efforts at it. Okay, item number A, I have a proclamation tonight for hospice month, and I will read that. The National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, November twenty nineteen. Whereas for more than forty years, hospice has helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, allowing them to spend their final months at home surrounded by their loved ones. Whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing the physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas palliative care delivers expertise to improve quality of life, and relief from pain can be provided at any time during an illness, and hospices are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. Whereas an increasingly fragmented and broken health care system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how health care can and should work at its best for its patients. Whereas every year, one point five million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. Whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that helps individuals make decisions about the care they want. Whereas the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient chores, and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bill Valas, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me of the City of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim November of twenty nineteen as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life. Discuss their end-of-life wishes with their family, and observe this month with appropriate activities and program. In witness hereof, I have here under set my hand this twelfth day of November twenty nineteen, and cause the seal to be affixed. Okay, next item of business is item, yes.
Ms. O'Neill's here with hospice.
Oh, hey, okay. You need to let me know. No, right there at the microphone, please. Yeah. Tell everybody who you are.
I'm Lisa O'Neill. I'm actually the volunteer and outreach coordinator with hospice, and we just want to thank you for recognizing this month as hospice month, and also just say that we're grateful that we can provide these types of services for individuals in the community, so. But that's all.
All right, let me present this to you.
She wanted to get a picture.
Okay, item number eight A at this time, discussion of some of the dog complaints we've had. Mr. McQueen, did you want to start comments on this?
Yeah, well, over the past year, year and a half, we've had several instances of loose dogs running at people, vicious dogs attempting to bite people and other animals. I walk a lot, so I run into people like Chris that's running, Ms. Hampton, and it's, it's a real concern. Not only that, there's just stray dogs everywhere. And I'm glad the chief's here, because maybe you can talk to some of the things that, that you've seen as well. Probably five or six months ago, I was out walking with my wife, and we heard three, three or four gunshots. So we walked to that direction, and there was a guy laying in the road with a dog right beside of him, and he had had to shoot the dog. The dog attacked him and his pet, just very upset. So with everything that we've done to try to improve the quality of life in Hamlet, to try to make things look better, that to me is a, a thing that needs attention quickly. I spoke to Jonathan several times, maybe a couple over the past few months, and was wanting to definitely try to look at doing something at the next budget. Unfortunately, the problem's getting worse. It's not a problem just specific to Hamlet. It occurs everywhere. But I think it's our job to do our good due diligence and try to get something in place soon, rather than later. And I'm not talking about hiring anybody right now by any stretch of the imagination, but what I am talking about is utilizing funds that's in the budget already to give the, the police chief the authority to maybe use some, some of your people that's already there in terms of going out and making headway with some of these issues. But if, if you could just speak to some of the, the things that you've seen, some of the issues you've had, and I know Jonathan's told me that you and him have talked about it, and y'all are in agreement that something needs to be done.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Chief. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Yes, sir. As Councilman McQueen is said, we, we hear countless calls about dogs on a regular basis, and I spoke with the city manager, and just to this date, we already have roughly two hundred and eighty animal calls for complaints on dogs to this date. For the month of November already, we're already at fifteen for the month of November. So it's, it's, as you said, it's a growing concern. I spoke to one of the citizens today, and she said she was cornered by dogs in the very, just about a week ago. She was cornered by dogs as well, so we definitely want to address this. We do have the animal truck, but we do find ourselves oftentimes with officers having to stop what they're doing to go get an animal truck to go out and address the dogs. And then when that officer is out of, he's out of his patrol car, should a, a event happen where we need emergency response, he can't respond. So he would have to come back to the officers, get out of his truck, get in his patrol car, and then the problem could be a moot point at that, at that state. We have to go all the way to the other side of Rockingham to address the dog concerns as well. So in addition to it being an issue for the citizens of Hamlet, it also is a burden to the police department as well, sir. So I do agree, we definitely need to address it as soon as we can.
I mean, I personally don't know how you do it with the way you've been doing it now. I mean, for financial reasons and budgetary issues, we tried to do it that way. It's just not working. Y'all doing a great job. I mean, look at all the strides you've made keeping other areas safe. And this is in no way a reflection negatively about what you've done to this point. It's just that it's impossible to do it in the manner that you've been doing it. So, I mean, I still want to keep this as a budget item for the budget meetings moving forward for a position. But until then, I would like to see us be able to use maybe some of the money that the, that the city already has through lost employees, for whatever reason, in, in the police department, to actually bring some of these officers in on their days off and let them work on this, and try to get this problem under control. But I mean, that's, that's my opinion. I, I know someone's here now that had an issue last night. I saw where you posted something on Facebook, and that's the second or third time that that's occurred. I just feel like it's something that needs to have the attention of us now. And we need to give this man the ability to do it in an effective and positive manner.
And in addition to that, Councilman McQueen, I've spoken to the sheriff's office. I think a lot of our officers do need, they also need some training in how to deal with dogs.
That's what they're going to say. They've got to be trained.
Yes, I've spoken to sheriff's office, animal control guys, so we, we got the training in line. So it's just a matter of time, whenever we can get the officers in place to do it. It won't be a problem.
All right, that's, that's all. I mean, that's my take on it. I would love to see us move forward with letting them come in now, off duty, to try to help, help with this as much as possible, and then move forward with a, a position once the, the new budget starts, the process starts next year.
Question, is, is the shelter accepting dogs now?
Yes, sir.
I know we ran through a spell there when they weren't accepting them, and that's a...
Yes, sir. And in addition to that, the young lady across the street, Tracy's dog groom, she has two kennels that she keeps dogs in, and she's, she's been gracious enough to take some of the dogs as well. So we've been using our resources as well.
But I, I firmly agree, and I've felt that way all along, that we need to have a trained dog officer that works. And that's, and it looks as though the situation's getting worse, so we need to put that in our next budget amendment or whatever, and see if we can do something with it. What do y'all think?
Oh, I mean, I definitely agree. I'd like to see us be able to do something now with the existing personnel, once they get trained. Give, I mean, there's no way you can have a couple, three officers on shift, and then they get a call. I mean, you said stuff, you got to go back, you got to get the equipment, you know, and then it's just, it's just not conducive to effectively doing, doing the job.
Have you been able to attach any of these dogs to owners and able to cite the owners for letting them run loose?
No, sir, we haven't been doing that. It just as, you know, as pretty much as a courtesy to the citizens, I did speak with the city manager about starting to enforce, enforce city orders, and he's, he's giving the green light to do so. So we have some other things in place.
I mean, you hate to do that, but I don't know any other way to solve the problem.
Yes, sir.
I mean, some of them have, have, have been in areas that, I mean, they had callers. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of that, but...
Turn them out in the morning. We, we had that problem one time before and solved that one.
I mean, what do we want to tell him? I mean, I, I'd like to see us move forward, because there's, there's money there from personnel that's not there, so that's not a problem.
I think we're short, what, how many positions right now?
Right now, we're short, we're short five positions.
Man, that makes it hard all the way around.
Yeah, and that's just, that's, that's a situation going on with every agency there. Yeah, and that's just, that's, that's a situation going on with area agents there and it's just.
That's a whole shift, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Right now, uh, like Chief McMasters was saying, we'll move forward with looking into training for the officers that we have. Ideally, we would like to look towards a non-sworn position, working around twenty-eight hours a week, only working these animal control cars, going out in the truck, working. But for now, I think the immediate, an immediate short-term fix would be authorizing some overtime for these officers to number one, get trained and then number two, move forward with primarily dress, addressing this concern. So, I think that that would be a good step forward right now, working towards that training in the upcoming days and then authorizing some, um, some extra time for them to tackle the program.
I have to say that, uh, non-sworn officer won't work because he has no enforcement authority at all. You got to be a sworn officer to take enforcement action, am I correct?
They can, they can address taking the dogs, a non-sworn can take the dogs, but like you said, as far as, as far as taking enforcement action against the owner, no, incorrect.
But, I know that was why the Sheriff's Department went to sworn officers.
Right. And that may be something that we can look at as well, but, I mean, right now, y'all, y'all need help with this situation, it's something that's, that's pervasive problem now, so. You, Mr. Morton, need to vote on it or consensus, what, what do you say?
I think at this point, you're just directing, um, the chief and the manager to use existing resources, we have an existing ordinance, so, we're not changing anything, just provide direction.
Okay.
A consensus of the board is fine.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and we appreciate, not only what you've done in that, but we appreciate the, the power and manpower you've put into the City Lake down there.
Oh, yes, sir.
I mean, I know for a fact, I've worked here, I've di- I've did it, dealt with it, and the fact that you've got it to the point it is now and kept it that way, that's testament to, to you and your, and your staff and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Let's put that, uh, as an item for the, uh, mid, mid-year budget, uh, when we do that in January. We'll discuss that, thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. McQueen, anybody else got any comments on that? Mr. Morton, you got any comments on, okay, thank you. Item number nine, we have the approval of tax releases, council, what are your wishes on that?
Move to approve tax release.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Item number ten, City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, and thank you to everyone for being here tonight, it's certainly good to see a, a full house here tonight, I have just a few matters of concern for council and the public's attention tonight. Uh, first, I wanna bring, uh, bring attention to basketball registration. Regular registration is going to go from November fourth to December sixth here at City Hall and then we will continue with late registration from December ninth to December thirteenth also here at City Hall. I also want to, uh, speak a little bit about the exciting news that we announced a few weeks ago about a grant being awarded from Game Time and Cunningham Recreation out of Charlotte. They are providing, uh, roughly twelve thousand dollars towards a new playground equipment at the City Lake, so we are very excited about that. I was speaking with the representative today, we're going to finalize all the plans with that and hopefully have the, um, the new equipment installed within the next, next six weeks. It's going to be an excellent addition to the City Lake as well as some other things that have been going on down there. Last week, the new fountain was installed and it looks absolutely wonderful, staff did an excellent job between Public Works and the Fire Department and really, and a collaborative effort to get that installed last week, it, I can't decide if it looks better at night or during the day, but it certainly looks great down there and has certainly received a lot of positive publicity over the past few days, uh, and the last week. We also finished repaving the senior center parking lot, uh, last week, that is something that we agreed upon in the nineteen, uh, nineteen-twenty budget. We were able to move forward with getting that done, so that certainly helped alleviate a, a hazard down at the senior center and something that I think will be a great asset in the, uh, days and weeks to come. Also, I spoke with Steve Davis with TRG Signs last week. He tells me that two of our new entrance signs should be here by the end of the year, so we're working with, uh, DOT, working with Steve to make sure that we get those appropriately placed to get, um, all of our paperwork in line to move forward with that. Um, City Hall and City Services will be closed November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. For residential garbage pickup, we are going to have a crew come out on Friday for that Thursday pickup. So, if you receive your garbage picked up on Thursday, uh, leave it out there for Thanksgiving and we will be there on Friday to pick that up. And the crew that will be working that Friday will be taking, uh, Thanksgiving Monday off, so, we are gonna run a crew that Friday after Thanksgiving to get the garbage picked up. So, uh, just bear with us, be patient, give us a call if you need anything or anything comes up, but we will get to it as, as quickly as we can. In the upcoming weeks, we have our Christmas events, Christmas tree lining is going to be December second, five thirty P M, that will be in our Main Street Park. And then the Christmas parade will be December fifth at three thirty, and of course, that will be the usual route down Main Street. We're looking, uh, forward to getting that taken care of and looking forward to a great holiday, holiday season. Uh, again, thank everyone that spoke tonight, Ms. Cavendish, Chris, uh, Ms. Chance, and certainly RCC, congratulations, Chief Martin, on such a wonderful announcement here tonight, uh, glad to be a part of that and glad to, glad to see that happen here tonight. That is the only formal matters that I have for council's consideration tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone have any comments for the manager? If not, we'll move along to comments of council, Ms. Masagie? Nothing tonight, okay, Mr. Morton?
I just have one thing I'd like to ask the City Manager, where, where are we at, uh, as far as the progress on the demolition of the property up there on Monroe Avenue, uh, at the corner of Washington?
Right, across from the school, from Monroe Avenue, yes.
Across from February, uh, the Monroe Avenue School.
Right, uh, the building inspector came through with a report, uh, the week, week before last, it gave us the clear to move forward with demolition, so as soon as we finish this Pine Street project, we're taking down those chimneys, we're gonna look for, uh, we're gonna look towards that project, we received a lot of complaints about, uh, the dilapidated abandoned house right there next to, uh, Gloria Mask, Dr. Mask's mother, there at the corner. Uh, that's been a complaint not only from Ms. Mask, but for the neighborhood for quite some time, so, we are moving forward, we've had the house inspected and I hope that we'll be able to move forward with it in the upcoming months very soon.
Okay, good. Uh, that's all I had, I just questioned about that.
Mr. McQueen?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things, uh, number one, for the, uh, troop five twenty-seven is here, thank you for coming. Um, it's a excellent thing that you're doing, working on that merit badge, um, I've got two boys, both of them got the rank of eagle, um, and it's actually helped them, you hear these scout masters tell you that it'll be a help for you, I promise you it will be a help for you. Um, stick with it and we're proud of you and thank you for coming. Um, next, uh, Ms. Cavendish, I'd just like to say thank you for coming to the podium and, and giving accolades to the people that work and do the job that keep the city running so smoothly. Um, we don't do half of what these guys do, Billy and his crowd, everybody does, chief, everyone does a tremendous job. I'm so proud to be associated with this group of people and the strides that we've made over the past few months. Um, secondly, or third, um, I wanna, I'm gonna bring something up, I hope I don't bring it up and, and it just start a controversy again, cause we've already had some of that with it. But, uh, at the last meeting, we had a, a chance to vote on a ordinance for, uh, tractor-trailer big truck parking in the city. Um, it was prepared by, um, the city attorney. And in the reporting of it, and in no way am I knocking the media that reported it, but it was reported that we had, uh, developed and enacted a new ordinance that prohibited these trucks from parking in the, in the town. And it's, that's a little misleading, um, through no fault of any person at the paper or anything. The misleading part of it is, is there's always been an ordinance in place that prohibited those vehicles from doing that. The misleading part was we cleaned that ordinance up and put specific issues that needed to be addressed, such as weight of the vehicle and things of that nature. So, in some situations, it could help people be able to leave a vehicle parked in some of these places. Um, so I did feel like it was very important for us to get that out there, we didn't create a new ordinance. We basically updated and brought up to two thousand and nineteen, the ordinance that was on the books. And I don't know how long the ordinance had been on the books, do you have any idea, Jonathan?
I would say probably, I, I don't know right off.
It's been there for a while, so it's, it, bottom line, it's nothing that was enact- enacted last month, it's something that was cleaned up. So, we, although we voted to enact it, it was a, a revision of an existing ordinance, I did, I think that was, um, very important to, to mention that. Um, everybody at the Seaboard Festival, I came and helped them the day of and, uh, they really did a terrific job. City staff, police, Public Works, Fire, everyone jumped right in and did everything they needed to do. Um, and I, I, I'm just so proud to see that go on, I mean, from somebody that used to work in the city and now up here, I can, I can see what y'all are doing with a different, a different lens, so thank you for that. Um, the last thing that I wanna mention, um, it's, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to sit up here tonight and witness my fellow council member and good friend Eddie Martin for the, just the outstanding achievements that he's made over his lifetime and the fact that he's been honored so justly here, um, by the Community College and his friends that have done that. Uh, the one regret is I never got to work for him. Um, but I can honestly say that I've thoroughly enjoyed my time with him here. And Dr. McKinnis introduced him as council chief and then councilman, that's always gonna be the chief, always, congratulations, chief.
Thank you, Jesse.
That's it.
Didn't leave a whole lot for me to say tonight. Uh, Eddie, congratulations, we've known each other and worked with each other for many, many years and, uh, I know the fine work that you did at Rockingham and, uh, I think it's just a great honor.
Thank you.
Kay and Tim, I can't tell y'all how much we appreciate what you do for us on Hamlet Avenue. Uh, the work that you all have done over there, uh, along with Ms. Bernice, you kept the place clean over there and you, you really made it a nice place to go visit. And, uh, thank you so much for what y'all do. Um, Mr. Stewart was not able to be with us tonight, we need to congratulate him on his, uh, election, uh, Mr. Moore and also Mr. Sellers, who is with us tonight, uh, congratulations to all of you and we look forward to working with you. And, uh, I just hope that everybody has a great, uh, Thanksgiving, a great family time together. Uh, we thank the Partnership for Children for you being here with us tonight and, uh, I do get your newsletter, so, uh, yep, just as a matter of fact, just got one last week. And I appreciate that greatly, and keep up the good work over there, thank you for the work, city employees, Billy's crew and, uh, the manager, they're right on top of things. I don't know that we've got another manager anywhere around that's as dedicated as he is, you call and give him a complaint out there on the street or something and he's gonna show up. And, uh, you know, that says a whole lot for the city, for the manager and for us also, but thank you so much. But everybody have a great Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. And that's all that I have tonight and I would entertain a motion for, to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion? Have a second, Ms. Masagie, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose likewise, alright, thank you.